What's going on everybody? Good to see you all on this. Harvest full moon in Aries, it's gonna be really frickin fantastic. Kind of just getting magical evening started here, I've got a lot of things. Other things to do tonight as well, and I'm sure you all do too, but this is gonna be really freaking awesome. I can't really see the chat too good, but I'm gonna go up there here in a second. I'm gonna take the names of everyone that wants to be included in this Lucifer invocation following the probably like twenty minute energy work session that we're gonna do first. So, I don't know where all of you are watching as far as maybe sitting at your desk or sitting out on the sofa, maybe you're in bed. The sofa or the bed would be the best place to do this, somewhere where you can get comfortable. If you can kind of lay back, that's for the best, but sure, I mean, you can sit there, do whatever, you know, you feel comfortable doing. Once we get started on the on the energy work portion of it, which is gonna be the first thing that we do, that's gonna be something where I wouldn't really advise you to be active in the chat if you want to get a lot out of the energy work session because you wanna be able to kind of drop mine, go into a light trance state. You know, just like you're meditating basically, and just be open to the experience, it's gonna be really, really, really powerful, I'm going to remove any blockages from everyone. I'm going to actually ignite everyone's chakras. You should definitely feel a difference after that is completed. Or just kind of getting prepared for that really, really powerful invocation that we're gonna do with Lucifer afterwards. So, yeah, it's kind of like first things first, I guess, right? But, um, everybody that's new to the channel, I appreciate you guys coming to check it out, please subscribe and please like the channel and if you would, that really means a lot to me, it helps me to be able to do what I do. Also, the super chat is enabled, if anybody feels inclined to donate to the channel, that is always much appreciated and always welcome as well, so, and thank you for everyone that donates, like you guys are freaking the best, it really means a lot to me when you do that. So, thank you once again, and of course, you guys know I love you all very much and every, it's like so awesome to see all of the like family of people that are always here and I really appreciate it and thank you to Orly Stewart, who's our moderator this evening, and she's always showing you on the spot on that, thank you so much. Please check her channel out and like and subscribe that one as well. Don't forget to check out Nicoline Albrecht's channel, Flowing Fire, check that out, subscribe to that too, it's really freaking kick ass. But yeah, what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna come up there closer to the screen here in a second, and I'm gonna get everybody's names that wants to be included in the invocation following the energy work session, and I'm also going to show you two different sigils that you're gonna actually have to get a black sharpie, and you're gonna have to draw it on yourself. So, you're gonna need a black sharpie, and that's about it, it's a black sharpie, so I'll give you guys a moment to go grab that here in a minute. I guess you can do that, if anybody, if everybody wants to go grab a sharpie, that's gonna wanna participate, you're gonna actually be drawing a sigil on the top of your feet, on the bottom of your feet, on the top of your hands, on the bottom or palms of your hands, and then you're gonna draw one in the center of your chest. So, it's, it sounds like it's a little much to it, but it's really not, it's simple, it takes like thirty seconds. If you don't wanna use a sharpie, I guess you can use like eyeliner or something of that nature. I don't know, I always wear a sharpie and walk around with this sigil like on the top of my hands all the freaking time, like half rubbed off. You would probably think I'm crazy, but people think I'm crazy any damn way, so it really doesn't matter. But if any of you guys want to go get a sharpie or some eyeliner, go for it right now, and we're gonna wait for you all to gather that stuff up, and then I'm gonna come up there closer to the monitor and get everybody's names. So, I'm just gonna kind of chill out for a minute, let you people grab a sharpie or something like that. You have some water too, if you want. Can I ever have enough water? Draw these to where you guys can see them, I'll go ahead and do that. Alright, everybody, what is going on? I can see everybody in the chat now, what is up everybody, good to see you guys. Alright, so I hope everybody has a sharpie, I'll show you what we're gonna do with that in a second, but first of all, I'll scroll back up through the chat here and see who has left a name that they wanna include, I mean, if you just wanna use your, like your YouTube name, channel name, whatever it is, you can use that if you want. Well, if you feel that you can't be included, oh, your feet can't be included, that's okay. No problem, just do what you can do. Now, you're not too late, Delphine, not at all. Alright, so I got Brandon James. Dominic. Orly Stewart. Dragon Star Alchemy. That's not too late, anybody, not at all. Alright, awesome, Keenan. Okay, Chris. Okay, let's see, alright, Shannon, wow, so a lot of you all here tonight, thank you guys so much for coming out, it's freaking awesome. Really awesome. Okay. No, you're not too late, Miss B. Hey, what's up, Elham? Alright, got you down, also Dee. Okay. Alright, alright. Okay, alright. Cool, well, anybody else that comes in in the next few minutes, they can feel free to jump in too, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna show you, this is the, this is a sigil that you're going to draw on the center of your chest. Now, if you feel that you can't do that, you can draw it on paper and you can gaze at it to kind of open it and charge it. That's fine too, but I do recommend drawing it on your chest if you can. I'm gonna show you, I'm gonna put this up in the camera first so you can see it, hopefully, there's gonna be enough light and all that, we'll make it work. But, um, this one is called the Clavis de Lucifer, which is the key of Lucifer. It's kind of a a different version of his sigil that is used to access some different parts of his of his spirit, basically, kind of like the healing aspects and the protective aspect of his translucent blue light that he will imbue you with. So, this is the sigil here that you're gonna put on your chest, and then again, I'm gonna try to show you guys so that you can see it, I hope it's not gonna be too dark. Let me see here. Let me find something. I have a flashlight in here somewhere. But much of other things too. Lot of crap, so you have to get that. Alright, so, it doesn't really matter, it's backwards. Makes no difference. Okay, so, I will try to make it to where you can see it, okay? About that. Hopefully you all can see it. Try to bring it even closer, about that. Trying to hold it straight for you guys. There we go. Alright, so, that's that one. Hopefully you guys had enough time to get that down. And the next one's a lot easier, this one's called the Key of Creation. This one, you put it on the top of your hands, on the palm of your hands, top of your feet, the bottom of your feet. Oh, wait, if you can't, oops, I might call him somebody, fuck. How does this happen, dude? Oops. Calling people here, fucking crazy. Alright, so, um, yeah, so, if you can't do it on your feet or whatever the case may be, just do what you can do, if you don't wanna draw on your body, you can draw on paper and put it beside the other sigil and charge it, open it too. Alright, so, this is the other one. You may have seen it before. There we go, pretty simple, oh my gosh. Thank you so much, Prim South, holy shit, I appreciate it so much. Freaking awesome. So again, this one right here goes on the top of your hands, the palm of your hands, top of your feet, bottom of your feet. I'm gonna draw it on myself here in a second and I'll show you guys, so you know exactly what's up. Thank you so much for the donation, Super Chat, I appreciate it, and, you know, anybody that feels inclined to donate, thank you so much, helps me a whole lot. Yeah, super, super appreciate it. Hopefully you guys have this one down now, I'm gonna go ahead and leave it up just for a few more seconds. So, one more last look. Alright, there you go. So, is there anybody else? Hey, what's up Johnny, I'm sure, uh, you wanna be included in this Lucifer invocation, don't you, brah? Alright, let's see, okay, Orsio, I'll get you down too. Okay. Thank you again, Prim South, so much, you wanna be included in the ritual too, I assume? There, Prim? Alright, what's up Lucia, you wanna be in on this too? It's like, why not, right? Okay. Let's see. So, we got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen people, holy shit, that's cool, it's very cool. So, hula, oh yeah, let's get this drawn, so everybody make sure you got either sigils drawn on paper or on your body. So, I'm gonna go ahead and do this. So, I got that one. Probably can't see it, there you can, yeah, there it is. So, I got that one. Make sure if your hands are sweaty and stuff, so back them off first because the marker's not gonna stick so well if you don't. Oh, mobsters, man, holy crap, thank you so much. I really appreciate that, oh my goodness gracious, like I really do. I assume you wanna be included in the ritual too? And I will put you down, definitely put you down. Hell yeah. Drawing on my feet. And now, if you draw it on your chest, you do not have to leave your shirt off, your clothes off or anything like that, you can put your shirt right back on. It's all good. And once you get these drawn on yourself, like sit there and with your feet planted on the floor, like feel the energy that you're gonna start to kind of just pull up from the earth, I mean, you'll feel, your whole body will just feel charged and you will really feel energy kind of flowing through you like you hadn't before, and it can almost be a little too much, really, to be honest with you, but it's pretty crazy, so that in itself was at least an experience for me, hopefully, you gotta feel that too. Alright, so I got that one too. Okay, is there anybody else that wants to get in on their name in on this, cause I'm gonna go back there, we're gonna fucking do it, so, anybody else? Yeah, this is definitely gonna amplify that Dragon Star Alchemy for sure, you know, because of yeah, what I'm really wanting to do with this too, with this with this invocation of Lucifer's to have him to really, you know, harnessing this Aries energy in his full moon tonight and really give us the drive, the desire and the ambition to go out and do the things that we wanna do even, even more so. And, you know, if our inner black flames weren't yet fully ignited, and after tonight, they certainly will be. You know, adding, adding some of that Aries energy to what Lucifer's already gonna be doing for us, it's just gonna be that much more powerful. So, yeah, fuck, yeah. Whoa. It's cold right here, Jack, what is going on? Whoa, okay. Well. We're definitely going to do some, we're in a burning sage, we're gonna light some shamanic fire salt to kind of, uh, cleanse and sanctify and banish all of our sacred spaces that we're in right now. You know, even if you're not in your temple, I'm sure you're in your home or you're somewhere safe and comfortable, and that can also be a sacred space in and of itself, anywhere where you find peace, comfort and rest. So, if everybody can kind of get comfortable, that's gonna go a long way with all this, if you can kind of just get comfortable and relax. And be open to the experience, be open to the energetic shifts that you may feel within yourself. Try not to think about all of the stupid details of everyday life, you know, that stuff can wait until later. To try to, uh, any thoughts that come, try to sneak in, just let them come in and let them walk right out. Don't give them any attention, don't focus on it. Don't forget to breathe, breathe deeply, breathe fully. So, once we do the banishing, I'm going to help you all to relax very quickly through basically a little quick guided meditation just to release tension in your body so that you can relax. Oh my gosh, man, there's more people freaking like in the super chat, you people are freaking amazing, like thank you so much, like holy crap. Is there anybody else that wants to be included in this too? I will write down a few more names, and then we're gonna start the banishing, then we're gonna go into the guided meditation. After that, I'll let you know that we're moving into the ritual portion, but you can still kind of just remain in that meditative state or however you feel that you wanna be. Man, Scave Dragon and Miss B, holy crap, thank you so much, thank you, thank you. And I will include, well, I already had you in there, Miss B, I think, but Scave Dragon, I will definitely include you in there, and thank you so freaking much, like it is so kind of you. I really appreciate it. Alright, everybody get comfortable. We've all come here together on this harvest moon on this full moon in Aries. On this very, very special evening indeed. One that packs a very powerful astrological punch without a doubt. And it is our intention here tonight to harness that cosmic energy. So that we may utilize it in our everyday lives for highest and best good. And it's through what is on providence, whoever this write. Then I banish all negative energy, all negative entities. Negative spirits. And really any, any energy and any consciousness that is not directly involved in this ritual working. Both in my temple and in every space that is linked to this ritual at this time. All of these areas are now vanished of all negativity. They are blessed. They are consecrated. And I should say, once again, any spirits that are not directly involved in this ritual working, we would ask that you now depart. That you now depart, depart, depart and go. As this is my space and those spaces are their spaces. And in this ritual that we have all that we are all participating in together, may wish for no interference of any kind from any spirit, any energy, any entity that does not have direct involvement in this right. And not only us sanctifying consecrate these sacred spaces, but each one of us.
Relax your jaw. Relax your nose. Your lips, your mouth. Your teeth, your gums even. Relax all of these areas. Relax your chin. And relax the entirety of your neck. Every bit of it. Just relax. Relax your shoulders and relax your collarbone. Moving around to your back, relax your spine. From where it enters into the bottom of your skull, all the way down to your tailbone. Relax your spine, relax your back. Moving back around, relax your chest. Relax your upper arms. Moving down, relax your elbows. And your forearms. Moving down into your hands, relax your hands and all ten fingers. And every single joint is found on those ten fingers. Just relax all of those areas now. And relax your sternum. Relax your stomach, relax your diaphragm. Relax the sides of your torso, all the way down to your waist. Relax the area where your navel is found. Moving down, relax your hips. Relax your rear. Relax your thighs and relax your hamstrings. Relax your knees, your shins and your calves. Down to your ankles. Relax your ankles, relax your feet. Both the top of your feet, the bottom of your feet, and every area of each of your feet that you have in between. All ten toes. And any joints that are found on those ten toes, relax those now as well. Feel yourself sinking comfortably into whatever it is that you are currently reclining on. Now study, steady and rhythmic breath. Now very quickly, return your attention to the top of your head. And begin to slowly scan down your body, all the way to your toes. Looking for any areas there you may still be holding some amount of tension. And if you do run across that tension, go ahead. And release it. Take a few moments. Scan yourself well. And just relax. Just relax, just relax. Just relax. Now that everyone's relaxed, we'll go ahead and get started with the energy work session.
Uma ester is matana, na sha chana lakamata. Na sha deso pan sayata, na sha kelo shmisto kunos. Alashne evina vata, alashne evina savekram. Estak dia svenu minata, kalish levana benza. Ulos kamana, ulos kamana, ulos kamana. Benzu meo, benzu meo, benzu meo. Destru mu alas na tera, destura in rasa. Impartameo ios kondezo. Inoka kalu sefa. 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 Inoka kalu sefa.
Lucifer, on this harvest moon, on this full moon in Aries. We call you forth, we conjure you. Come unto not only this temple, but come unto all the spaces of everyone that is here, participating with us, that is linked to this ritual, through this broadcast. We ask that you come unto our flesh. Come unto our blood. Reside not only in our bones, but also in our spirit. On this night, we wish to feel you within us, Lucifer. To feel your radiant energy. To know with the utmost certainty that you are here with us, and that you are here with us all now. Lucifer, I give you license to appear. We all give you energy and power to manifest. It is everyone's intention here tonight that you join us, Lucifer, come. Lucifer, come. Lucifer, come. Lucifer, come. Hear our words, see our signs. Do not forsake us, Lucifer, come. Lucifer, come. Lucifer, come. Lucifer, come. Come unto this temple, come unto this place. Come speak to us, commune with us. And view us with your energy, with your radiance. With your infernal majesty. Come Lucifer, come. 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 Come, he who lights or illuminates all the shadows at light in the darkness. Come, he is the morning star, come. Come Lucifer, come. Come Lucifer, come. Come Lucifer, come. We call you forth and we conjure you, come unto this temple, come unto this place. And in every place that is actively participating in this ritual. Come Lucifer, come. 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 Come Lucifer, come, let us feel your energy within us. Come unto our flesh, come unto our blood. Reside in the bone, reside also in our spirit, Lucifer. Reside in our spirit, Lucifer. Reside in our spirit, Lucifer. Not only in my spirit, but in the spirit of Skath Dragon, Brandon James, Susan Schultz, Dominique Lee Corkle, Orlee Stewart, Dragon Star Alchemy, Keenan Lassina, Chris Dodderd, JD Temple, Masters, Sharon Kaufman, Berke Pickar, Miss B, Elham Asai, Dee Pooh, Mauricio, Johnny Allen, Prem Self, Lucia Fay. They actively seek your influence in their life, Lucifer. Allow them to feel you on this night, on this full moon. Allow them to feel your energy, allow them to gain a better understanding of you and who you are, what you can do in their lives, to impact them in a positive way. Come Lucifer, come. Come Lucifer, come. Come Lucifer, come. Come Lucifer, come. I can feel you here. I can definitely feel you here now, Lucifer. And I hope that everyone else that's present can also feel you within them. As we all connect together, Lucifer, enjoy our energies, our collective energies, through this portal that you have shown us to create. We're sitting in enormous quartz crystal. Help us all to project energy into this crystal as a collective. With not only our energy, but your energy as well, and your essence, Lucifer. That once that is done, we may then each be able to pull what was imbued into this crystal collectively by each and every single one of us. And we ask that you assist us with that alchemical process, Lucifer. Help us to direct our energy into this crystal, Lucifer. Our sexual energy, our magical energy. The universal life force energy. Help us to direct it there, direct it into this crystal. Help us with that energy, Lucifer, help us with that energy. Help us to transfer this energy into this crystal, Lucifer. As you ignite a inner black flame, our energy shall increase exponentially. The more that you help us now, Lucifer, the more that we can help ourselves. So now place Flavus Day Lucifer onto the portal with the crystal over top of it. As well as the key of creation. Yes, that you transmute and trans port this energy, transmit this energy through an energetic frequency, Lucifer, back to each one of us. Back to everyone that is an active participant in this right, Lucifer. That is Skath Dragon, Brandon James, Susan Schultz, Dominique Lee Corkle, Orlee Stewart, Dragon Star Alchemy, Keenan Lassina, Chris Dodderd, JD Temple, Masters, Shannon Kaufman, Berke Pickar, Miss B, Elham Asai, Dee Pooh, Mauricio. Mauricio, Johnny Allen, Prem Self, and Lucia Fay. View us with that energy, Lucifer. And view each of us with that energy. A little bit of that full moon energy, some of that Aries energy. Help us to become the greatest versions of ourselves that we could ever dream possible. Give us the drive, give us the determination, give us the motivation, the desire, the true will to succeed in this world at any cost, and all things that we seek to succeed in. Make each and every one of us a force to be reckoned with. A force that is responsible for their own lives, in every detail. Responsible for both our victories and our failures. Responsible for both our life and our death. Our birth and our ultimate demise. Help us all to see things for what they truly are, Lucifer. Help us to see through the smoke and the mirrors, through the lies, through the different masks that people wear. Help us to see things for what they truly are. So that we can in turn help others in the same manner. Lucifer was trying to take you on a little trip there for a minute, but I'm I'm not gonna go. I don't know what might happen, so. I'm on a live stream at the moment. Thank you Lucifer, thank you, I could feel your presence, I could feel the influx of energy. And sure, for everyone here, Lucifer, that you deliver the energy of this ritual unto all of those who are participating today. Thank you Lucifer, thank you. Thank you Lucifer, thank you on behalf of myself and all the others here tonight, who want to thank you Lucifer. I want to thank you Lucifer. Thank you Lucifer, thank you. Thank you. And of course, I'm not going to tell you that you can depart, because you know that if you want to, you can. And if you want to hang out, you can do that too. But of course, whether you remain or whether you go. Regarding the spaces of everyone else that's out there tonight that's participating. They can tell you themselves how they feel about that, and if they would like for you to depart, or if they would give you the license to make your own decision to stay if you'd like to. They'll communicate that to you, Lucifer. But of course, you know that you're welcome to stay here. I hope all of you enjoyed that, you guys can come on back if you're still kind of out of it, or maybe you're back with it, I don't know, I was kind of out of it just a minute ago, for sure. But you guys can come on back, I'll head over talk to you guys for a minute. Before I have to run and got quite a few rituals that I have to do for clients tonight. But I wanted to do this with you guys. Um, it was just, it was an important night, uh, you know, regarding Lucifer, it was an important night because of the full moon, and it was an important night because it was a full moon in Aries, which is really significant to me personally, so. I really wanted you guys to share that with me, wow. Thank you, Delfini, wow, thank you guys so much, so much, I really, really appreciate it, like, ah. You guys kill me with that, I love it though, I love it so much, and like, I hope that you guys, uh, you know, really got something out of that. Um, I really enjoyed it, I always enjoy these spirituals with everyone, and I think that they're very empowering and impactful, and just a, uh, good time to spend with cool people, and you know, yeah, I guess. But I'm gonna run, it's like four in the morning, I've only got a few hours left of this moon, you're very welcome, everybody, and I love you guys so much. And I will definitely catch you soon. And I haven't done a podcast in a while, so I'm gonna do that, so I'll let you know when. Ah, but I am freaking hot sweaty mess right now, so I am gonna go and rinse off, and then get back in here, do what I gotta do, and, um, probably get to sleep when the sun comes up, so, yeah, that's how we do. But anyways, guys and girls and demons and angels and whatever else is out there, vampires probably, um. Yeah, there's definitely some of those, I'm sure, but, uh, all of you. I'll see ya, love ya, and, uh, catch you next time. Hell Lucifer.